LLC, we have a request to amend an existing conditional use for a planned development to continue as a single-family home to dog kennel, training and dog day care facility, including grooming service and pet supply shop. And file one conditional use to increase total permitted dogs allowed on the property. Can you hear me at all? You can't hear.
Not much.
You want, are you okay, Mr. Pedder, here? I can't hear you. So, see if you can resolve that on your.
All right, yeah, I can hear you pretty much.
So far, I haven't said anything except I read the petition.
Yeah, I heard that.
My item is conditional use. Here, a facility for. Use to. That is an exhibition. This matter was published in the Daily Herald on March 30, 2022. And we have no objections or comments. For many of the various departments, how we've circulated the petition, or the report is neighboring, this is separate. So I'd like to start with exhibits. I see that I have a plan of survey, which is petitioner's exhibit number. And that. Pet exhibitor's exhibit number one. I got a site plan, which is petitioner's exhibit number two. And then what else I have, I'm not certain. So why don't you identify these? What we have there is distances from the. Yes, this is distances from the various things to the. Here. Okay, so then I have petitioner's exhibit number three, which shows various distances to neighboring properties. And this is intended as. So let's. All petitioner's attorney. You step up and. All your witnesses, my, my sworn in.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mike. We are representing our family pet sitting house, which is owned by Kelly and Joe Manick, who are sitting in the front. I will be doing the presentation for them, so try to get this done as quickly and efficiently as possible.
Sorry, if they're going to testify at all or even answer questions, we have this morning.
Kelly, why don't you stand, please, please.
Trace your hands, please.
Mike, you're going to testify.
Your dispositions were affirmed. The testimony about to give at this class now, hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So preliminarily, we've had some information about this property and this similar use. I asked, do you want to top that record or start all over?
We did, uh, I know which part, at the very beginning, but.
Yeah, but, I mean, I'm not suggesting that I. To you.
No, that's fine.
There are inconsistencies, it's going to complicate things. We have that to hold, right?
No, I don't think you should.
Fine. It is unadaptable, unlike some of these dogs. Right in.
Mr. Carver, members of the committee, our reason for here today is our application to amend our special use, which is made from 50 dogs, which is now the.
Hey, Bob, could you have him speak into the microphone?
Thankfully, no one was beside the car. Give me a two words. The phone is right there.
To amend our use from 50 dogs to up to 150 dogs. While that may seem a lot, we will accept whatever this panel agrees to, if it be 100 or 125 dogs. The reason we are doing this is trying. Trying to cover now and in the next three years. The business itself, my clients are licensed by the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. They do their work on 4.6 acres of land, which is located on Wilson Street in unincorporated West Chicago. The petitioner presently has a dog kennel business that includes training services, dog daycare, grooming services, pet supplies overnight. And one of the things that we are looking to put into is a low-cost. Excuse me. Try to get your heart down. Okay. Like I say, low-cost vaccination clinic, which is one of the proposed requests. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, which we've seen over the last two years, there has been an extraordinary need for this type of service that my clients provide. And one of the reasons we have come here is we are in a process, we want to modernize the property, increase the boarding services, as well as provide for foster care and local rescue services. Now, while the request is that we ask for 150 dogs, that is for what we projected need to be in the future. We are not looking to put, go from 50 dogs right now to 150 dogs next week.
125 dogs.
Okay, yeah. You don't even have a microphone, so you don't need to speak. I, I would have called a comment later. Thanks.
To answer the lady's question, we will accept whatever this board is, if it's 100 or 125 dollars. But as we have here, we cannot handle all that right now. That's what we're looking at, is for future growth. And one thing we are trying to do is not come back here in a year, two years, or three years and ask if we can get another 25 or 50 dogs allowed us. But one of the issues that we have is what is, we don't have, let me explain where this is at.
You can take the microphone.
Yes, I can take it. As you see right now, this is the site plan that we have. This is, it's established right now. There's a grooming room here, there is a pullover, which houses dogs. There's another pullover in here, and there are some outdoor services. And there's a second one with outdoor kennels. Now, I'd like to show you what this means in that logo. In this, I think it's exhibit, see, Bob? Yep, okay. This is the property as it states right now. This, everything to the west is forest. This is all open land up here. And the only people which this could impact is down here, these are townhomes, and these are townhomes. This is, we're down at 59. This is Jolie, uh, Wilson State, excuse me. What we have done. Mike, I'll address this right now. This is, with the improvements that we are proposing, we have gone from each of the houses. Now, this house here is strictly for grooming, which only will have one to two dogs at any time. So that could be a lot of noise. This building here is presently, when I add up, you know, what we're adding on is indoor training session. One of the reasons it's indoor, it's for inclement weather, and it also backs down noise. That's what we're looking at. And this is the problem building. This over here is the other building. These buildings here, here have to be redone because of their age, and they need to be modernized. There, but what this will do, half of the building is there already, and this extra half is going to be used for local rescue. So half of the building will be local rescue, half of the building will be regular boarding. Now, you see from each building, we have found how far that this building is to the closest neighbor. Now, the closest neighbor right here is 368.75 feet. These numbers we got off the county website. So if they're off, I think they're off with the county. But this gentleman has put a letter of recommendation in at your package. This building down here is 523 feet, and these over here are either 542 or 483. Now, from these buildings here, from these people, you're looking 394, 362, 331. If you look though, this is only Route 59, these people are getting more. More noise than they're going to get from us. But one of the things that I also want to bring up to you, Wilson Avenue, I was right to the south of the property. We actually own the south portion of Wilson Avenue. I think you could see. This right here. So Wilson Street goes through the, my client's property. How this was known, I don't know, but our property goes south of the, of Wilson Street. This was one of those long time ago, around 100 years, pregnant. So our property goes, it's 799 feet from here to 800 feet. Okay. One of the things that we are looking at is right now, it's for the future, for future rescue problems. Right now, we have more than the normal type of rescues. Rescues are becoming problematic for all of the dog owners and rescue operations in the area. We, at present, have donated already approximately $50,000 to local rescues for boarding and other services. This will only increase. What we have found for local rescues, people at the pandemic went out and they adopted animals. Now that they're going back to work, they're saying, we can't do it anymore, and to give them all back. So my clients are trying to help out what, what we can do, because it's not our position to euthanize. One of the other things is the traffic. Traffic, this is, as you see from our exhibits. Wilson is not a major owner. This is not going to increase the traffic at any major time. The only time traffic actually may increase would be on holidays, 4th of July, when people are dropping their dogs off. Now, one of the considerations we also have is fire. We are upgrading all of the buildings. That's one of the reasons we're doing this. We're taking the old buildings that have been there for many, many, many years and upgrading them with new electrical, new construction materials. But the other thing this does, we're taking the outside dog rooms and putting them inside. In your packet, we gave you some, what they call pictures of the suites.
I can't even figure out what this is. These little cages. direction from each street.
Next to the fighter, houses that are open, and these suites that are built professionally. So they look just like this.
I could do some, uh, I'm not sure if this is material. Like, we can't double back with this here, but what's. I see number 37 on one of them. Is there, are these stacks of, this is, one, so we have, this is another, or?
No, it's just.
Also, it's a double door, it's one suite. It's in the door. And this is a shot, there's a shot down. Okay, suite itself, right, so. Hey, you know the rough dimensions of these?
Five by five.
Five by five.
The one that we're looking at is five by five, and it's also four by four.
Oh. I don't know if that's material to this question.
There, that's assumptions with the new construction that we're going to be dealing, this will update, modernize the property, and reduce fire risk and other hazards. But one of the concerns that this committee has to do is what about the land values? The surrounding land values would only be increased due to more water and improved facilities. This is not be an older, dilapidated type of business. This will be a very modern, very base-seeking one. Now, the noise, with the new development and where the way it's going, the noise is going to be reduced. There'll be less dogs outside running all the time, and less from the outdoor kennel bikes that are there. Everything is going to be indoor. Now, this is not to say there won't be any dogs outside, but it's going to reduce the number and the time they're out there. And this will also keep the people in. This is building three, where they have the indoor training facility. So they're taking this Houstonian right here, where it was an outdoor, where they do most of the work right now. This will be diminished because it will be doing more and more inside work. And all of this has been designed to, to cut down noise.
That's almost somewhat relative, though. Can you tell us within a degree of certainty, what the hours are for outside dog activity and where it's located? Certain parts of the property or?
Well, at this point, right now, the outdoor activity is here, here, and here. This is all open space.
And where will it be in the future?
Well, this will always be here, but it'll be reduced, it's going to be more located in your inside.
And what extent will it occur at all outside?
You always have some on the outside because dogs have to run, and you've got the confinement, and there are some types of training, you have to have more space than would be inside. But the, the main thrust is going to be in the training center.
I think we have some assistance with the, we should get our speaker system, so we're going to recess for just a moment.
Thank you.
Right, uh. For recess, during which I explained certain procedures about how the hearing would go forward this evening, we did not discuss details, any facts related to the hearing, et cetera. And I also indicated that we will circulate, or we will have available signature pages for those who wish to indicate support of or opposition petition, but don't wish to speak this evening. So those sheets are, you know, there's someplace here in the moment. With that, you presume?
Just to recap for the, for the moment, just to make this absolutely clear to the panel and to the people, this we're calling building one, which is a tear down, and this will be used for grooming. This is where you only can have one or two people at a time. Building two, this is the indoor training facility, and it's going to be added indoor, it's going to be constructed to reduce noise, it'll be used much more than the outdoors, especially in inclement weather, but it'll take away a lot of the outdoor activity that's presently out there. This is building three, this is totally torn down, it'll be moved right now on the east side, you have runs, outdoor runs, those will all be taken out. This will be one building, half of it will go to rescue, half of it will go to directed business. My clients have. Excuse me. What, are very conscious of the taking care of neighbors. And one of those things, they have already built a six-foot flat kennel fence to minimize, this is around the property, to minimize, one, the noise, as well as helping keep the property in good shape. Now, I have shown you all of the distances which are at, I think, exhibit three, from the buildings themselves to the other people, as well as Route 59 to the people on the south. As you can see, the closest house. That gentleman has put in a letter supporting us. He is the closest one to anything. And there in the package, we have also put other neighbors and other organizations and clients who have, who are supporting this petition. It is our, our extreme. It is our goal in this matter to respect the neighbors that are around here, so we are doing everything we can to make this more neighborhood-friendly. We're also working to reduce noise and increase the property values, and as well as increase the safety, care, comfort of all animals and our customers. In the package, this was presented to the village of Warrenville, they did approve it. Their position in the, was, they would say yes to 100 dogs. But the letters that are submitted in the package, I believe, are very telling of what my clients have done, not only for this industry, but for the community. And I think it would be, it is very appropriate to allow them to expand the business, take care of this problem, which we are all facing. Nobody wants to see euthanized animals. But we are working with the shelters, the rescue organizations, and we continue to do this, but to do this, we have to improve the property and expand it. And if there is any questions that the panel may have, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay, first of all, I request that we get a copy of the, this is an amendment with an existing conditional use.
Yes.
So I'd like to get from the staff a copy of the old conditional use and the conditions to be distributed, or we know what the approximate data that is?
It was five years ago?
If you don't know, that's. Okay, I'll, I'll figure out.
It was approximately five years ago, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Now, I presume, just for the record, that all of the activities that will occur that have been described, adoption, rescue, exercise for the animals, et cetera, are proposed to occur 12 months a year, seven days a week, or are there times?
No, and this is a 24, so different time.
Okay.
Usually, to answer that question even more, by eight, nine o'clock at night, there is no noise, because all the animals are already inside in the pens, and they usually come at 7, 8 o'clock, I think it is.
All right, can we, can we limit? Is it feasible to limit outdoor activity by any of the dogs to a certain time? You just said usually it occurs. Can we impose that as a condition that there be no outdoor activity after a certain hour?
Yeah, it can be, it can be.
Once an hour.
It would probably be the best like from eight or nine to six.
Early, early, you offer at 6:30 a.m. 6:30 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. That's correct. And what about visitors coming for adoption? Are they restricted to certain times, or can they be restricted to certain times? Well, yeah, but what time?
Usually, that's business hours, eight to five or eight to six. But they have that.
All right, well, I'm talking about the possibility, if this goes forward, of imposing a condition to that effect, so.
Yeah.
Something you can look at.
Where there is the operations, we have all booked our office at 7:00 a.m. if there's plus 6:00.
That's the way I'm reading. 7:00 a.m. till 6:00. Our visitors, customers. What about dropping off a dog at midnight, does that occur?
No.
Same hours as customers.
They can only drop off or pick up between them.
Okay. When you, when a dog is given to you for adoption, I presume that this is a facility that does not euthanize the dogs in any way connected to that. All right, so how long are the animals usually at your facility?
That could, that really varies depending on the organization that gives it to us, as well as the type of dog. It could be there anywhere from a couple days to several months.
Yeah, I'm not asking that question for the purpose of trying to fashion some conditions on this operation, but rather to understand the impact than the numbers.
Yeah, and that's really one of the issues that we've had with the foster, that's why we have to expand the foster rescue portion, because many of the dogs we now have, before they were, they would be on a neighbor to, and now you're talking now weeks, or either a few months, and now we're getting more of those rescues that we have to take care of, okay?
When someone drops off a dog or adopts a dog, how long does it take to do that? An hour?
To drop the dog off just for boarding services or daycare?
Well, I'm talking about the adoption service, but from the adoption perspective, it depends on the, on the individual service that we're working with in the company, rescue.
In most cases, 20 minutes, it's paperwork, and it's assigned and location on the facility.
And those who wish to adopt a dog, obviously, make a number of visits.
Um, not really. Most times, they'll come out two times, three times max. I haven't had anybody that spends the facility more than three times without.
Yeah, I'm suggesting conditions here, rather. What about garbage facilities?
We certainly have roll cans, just like a residential roll can. We have five of them.
How often do I get picked up?
By the, by the. First family service.
We have a service that we.
You have a private service?
We have a service that could be, it's a private service, yes.
What, deliveries to the facility of supplies and things of that nature, do you have a truck or?
No, it's not there. No, I, I mean, we may have the UPS delivery from time to time. I usually pick everything.
I don't know what the rules on that are anymore, because. I'm sorry, Chris. From my neighbor's house, it's pretty close, so.
Mr. Carver, I would like to make one clarification. When you were asking about how many times people come, I am a proud owner of a rescue. I saw the dog, I went to it, I saw it, and I took it home that night.
See, you're one of those that pulls suppliers and.
Well, I actually, it was one of my wives, forget that shit. The girl, the woman who says she's never had another dog, now has a dog. Yeah, I'm solving a problem. I had the dog down for eight years.
All right, I don't question the need for this service, I don't question anything about, you know, the value to the community or whatever. I'm entirely focused on zoning issues. And as you know, the Illinois Supreme Court has spoken pretty definitively. And as you know, the Illinois Supreme Court has spoken pretty definitively about conditional uses. And in order to, apart from the regular standards, set of conditions, in order to deny a conditional use, we must find that there is something unique about this particular site within the district, which sets it apart from similarly zone, underlying zoning sites, so that it is somehow unflueable because of that unique circumstance or condition. So there's probably 75 pages in this opinion, and I just did mediocre job of summarizing them. But I don't think that that is true of the request for numbers. So the concept of the bunk, kennel, et cetera, is presumed to be permitted within the district unless there's something unique about the site. But the numbers, hours of operations, all those things are not presumed, probably approved. So our focus here has to be the impact of numbers on the property and the neighbors, et cetera.
So just shorten the hours for the rescue part of it?
No, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying that presumption, there is no presumption in your favor about 125 dogs versus 50. How many do you typically have now?
Four.
I think it's the best way to say it. Which is 50. I mean, if you're permitted for 50 and you have 60, you don't have to.
I actually think 75.
Would you take training into consideration or do you think that could be on the program? I would say our average is between 3 and 5.
So again, I have a question for the staff because I need to understand how to count the animals. And if six puppies are not counted for the total definitions, you think, or if it's, I'd like to know that before we make a decision. So could you check that out for us? I think there is a distinction between.
There is a distinction between grown dogs and puppies, yes.
Yeah, so when you say 125, you could have 125 adult dogs, each of which have six puppies.
That is theoretically possible, but it hasn't been, it hasn't been what had ever happened to us.
All right.
We've had, puppies are not the norm at the property. There are very few hours of more adult dogs.
All right, well, I just was remembering that.
I think it was in the case to. At the case where, yeah.
Okay, so now, assumption. Mr. Murphy, do you want to start the questions for the board?
Can you pass the microphone, please?
Have these lights here.
Yeah.
What's the issue?
Stop it, stop it. Yeah, move the mic, move it to the other direction. The only house here is this small vacant land. This, everything here, all the across vacant land, this is vacant land, this is this gentleman's property here.
You have other questions, Mr. Murphy?
No, I can be answered.
We didn't hear the question, could you?
I can. Mr. Murphy was asking what this property here and this here. This property and all this back here is open vacant land at this point. This here is a house, this gentleman owns this parcel. And this one? He owns this one.
All right, well, then let's just, next, we'd like to ask you another question.
Mr. Moran? Mr. Moran, we can't hear you.
I just want to make sure, so now at night, is it warm?
Extremely, yes. All the dogs right now are in the kennel inside. And that's why we're also trying to bring in a whole ones. Knock those out, so now all the dogs are inside all, at night after 7, 8 o'clock. You know, so there's not going to be any noise at all at night until early morning to get that out.
Because I don't, I love dogs. I don't have one, but I love my neighbor's dog to the right, my neighbor's dog to the left. We love me too.
We can talk.
12 o'clock at night, I put their bark at.
I have my lonely dog. I understand that because my little guy is knee-high, looks like a black lab, and he's got a big mouth. But I always make sure that, you know, I do nothing to let him outside after 10 o'clock and still bother me. But on our side over here, the dogs are not out, out in the park.
Because you showed the business. That was my question.
Thank you.
Mess this up. I have just a request that you please clarify from me about this 125, because it seems to be the maximum amount that you're asking for. And yet you're going to have rescues and you're going to have.
That's total dogs. Total dogs, rescues.
So at all times, everything out there is not going to exceed what I explained, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And this is going to sound funny, but this conditional use, you post vaccination, but a public of people like us.
I know, I know a couple people I'd like to work on, but this is for dogs.
This is a service that you're providing.
Yes, because a lot of our clients.
So when the service actually gets faced, how many dogs would possibly be that, be accessible?
Well, what I can tell you is that on the 125, the only time I can see us hitting that number would be usually spring break, it's a big holiday, that's the biggest of the year.
Hey, Bob? When, when the audience talks, I have no clue. It's, I've missed so much of it. If that's going to be testimony, they should address it through a mic.
Okay, the response was maximum number of dogs is 125. 125 rarely occurs at the site, but does occur during various holiday periods.
I'm, I'm asking for, Kelly and I are asking for the 125 for those peak periods of time. We would include puppies in the count. We would include rescues in the count. We would, we would make sure that that number was never exceeded. We're not prepared for that today. I just want to make that clear. We have a lot of work to do before we can actually handle that volume.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Just a question going toward increasing this 125. Could you take a moment to just address sanitation in the facility?
Each area of the property that the dogs are out, if they're outside or inside, has at least two waste buckets, five-gallon buckets with a cover on them. They also include a plastic bag, because nobody wants to clean a five-gallon bucket. Those buckets are emptied every single night and thrown into those trash receptacles that I talked about earlier in regards to, the waste gets picked up weekly by the garbage service.
And so you, you know, you can accommodate 125 dogs at that time?
Yeah, it's, it's, again, we would probably need more employees, right, to handle that many dogs safely. And, and for us, waste is extremely important to have it cleaned on a regular basis throughout the day because that is one of the number-one ways that dogs pass diseases from one to another. So it's something that we take very serious in regards to cleanup.
Mr. Cutter?
None.
Dan Anderson?
I'm good, thank you.
So now to the audience, first, I have my petition sheets.
I have them at the back table.
There are back tables, so those are, you want to make use of that already. And then, how many people wish to make a statement, a seat paper, make some remarks on the record? Okay, so would you all stand and be sworn in?
Raise your right hands, please. You just soundly swear affirm the testimony about to give at this cause and out here. It will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
All right. Limit this about three minutes for your remarks. And I'd like you to go up to the speaker once again. Name, spell the name, address, where, where that is in relation to this property, mile away, two minutes away, however you want to describe it. And then, use order of quotes. Yeah, if you would, if you're speaking, you don't have to sign the, sign the sheets. Okay, would you like to be, how about the lady that I come off?
Hi there, thank you for letting us speak. My name is Carolyn Polos, P-O-L-O-S. I live at 337 Crestwood Drive in West Chicago. I'm part of the townhomes. Okay, so we just walk right here. I actually do face Route 59, and we do have Route 59 traffic. However, the people on Wilson do not. They just have dog traffic. So I oppose this because a couple of reasons. The noise, traffic, safety for the kids on and off the bus, lack of parking. I also oppose because of our property values will be decreased because of all the increased traffic and commercial business. The noise, there is after-hours noise. Dogs do bark after hours. I know that you do as much as you can to keep them quiet. But like you said earlier, we are surrounded by forest preserves, and there are a lot of coyotes. So that does get the dogs barking at night. We have, you have, if you see on here, this tiny one-lane driveway. Right now, when we come out here, there's a lot of times we have to wait because there's a car leaving and they have to wait for the cars to come out before another one can go in. So I'd like to see that driveway doubled in size. That would, that would go a long way. To be honest with you, that would go a really long way. But also parking for, you know, your customers would be increased as well. So traffic is really a, a big one. There's a bus stop with kids that get off right at your driveway. So I think with this double driveway and cars being able to get in there and not have to wait on Wilson, which is a, you know, it's a country, it's a one-lane country road sort of, you know, there's no center line on that one.
No, we're going to have summary response to all of the questions, but it's not a dialogue. It's just we take comments and then respond. But I want to make note, if you read, first of all, I shouldn't have said this earlier, you need to have the site plan device or show where the park is, employee, customer, et cetera. And if you agree to increase the size of the drive, you got to revise the site plan to show that because everything is sort of tied to the site. Anything else?
There was one thing, but hang on one second, Karen. I think that, that's all I've got. But that truly, I'm the president of Crestwood Trails, across the street there. That would go a long way to double that driveway. And, and really, I mean, you know, personally, I don't want to hold up your business, but from 50 to 125 is an awful lot all at once. So I understand that it's for future. I'd rather come back another time rather than, you know, you go too much and you're overwhelmed and then we all have to live with it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Cheryl. I live at 306 Crestwood. In the first building, as you come in, and I'm on the left-hand side. So I am close. I don't see a line to my home that measures how close? Not to my home.
Well, okay, the remarks about distances to neighboring sites is positive.
Yes.
We did perfect in your post. Tell us how you, what your.
I oppose the petition because of several reasons. Dogs have gotten loose from this facility. And there are people in the neighborhood, not me, but others, who are terrorized by the livestock. The traffic coming out or going in to the one lane to this facility, I know it's not their employees, but it's their customers shoot out of there while we are driving down Wilson Street. And almost two times in the last six months, I nearly got T-boned coming into Wilson Street from 59 to go into my home. If, if the road is expanded, I'd like to see a stop sign so that your customers stop as opposed to they've just picked up their dog or dropped it off and they shoot out because they have somewhere else to go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Barbara Lockett. I live at, in West Chicago, 29 W. I live about two miles from their facility.
Can you spell your last name, please?
I have been bringing my two rescues there for two years now. I have never once gotten out of that car and been afraid of any other car coming near any of my animals. I've never smelled any trash. I've been in and out of their facility many times. It's very clean. They have a huge staff there. They're all very professional and they take very good care of their animals. Now, I would not take my dogs anywhere else, and it's the first time I have ever had my dogs anywhere. We desperately need homes for these animals. And we need people that are going to take care of them and rescue them, not kill them. And they need safe, clean facilities. And we have to give it to them. We've got women my age going to other states, bringing animals here so that they're not killed. If we don't help other businesses help them, how are we ever going to help any of these animals have a chance at life? Keep them off the street. Give them a chance. We've got to help them. And that's why I'm here. I, I support it, I really do.
Very good, thank you.
Hi there, my name is Ed Murphy. Avid, avid dog lover. Unfortunately, I do not support, just for the reason that as far as traffic goes, I agree with Karen. The single driveway is the, I think. Um, I agree with Carolyn. Um, the single driveway is the, I think, the biggest nuisance, uh, that, that I deal with. And I have two little girls and stuff like that with the cars in and out of the driveway and the cars coming down Wilson. I've actually pulled one of their cars out of a ditch for your customer a couple years ago or something like that. Um, because there's a fairly steep drop-off. So I think my biggest thing would be, um, just having a designated parking area and doubling the, the size of the driveway. I, I think to benefit our neighbors and things like that, because they're, you do have to wait for cars coming, uh, in and out and things like that, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, thank you for taking the time to listen to me. My name is Tracy Housenfeld, H-E-U-S-I-N-K-V-E-L-D. Um, I am the resort manager at Our Family Pet City, and obviously I am in support of it. Um, uh, one of the things I, I heard about was, um, the traffic is a problem. Unfortunately, Wilson runs right between Route 59 and Joliet Street, and so there is an exorbitant amount of traffic that people use as a cut-through as well. And I can hear the cars drag racing down Wilson Street, and it's not our customers that are doing it. Um, as far as the facility, I've been there for three years, and I've watched Joe and Kelly make all of these improvements to reduce the noise. Um, and, um, we've made, uh, extraordinary improvements, including, um, paving the parking lot to get rid of the gravel and, uh, putting up the, the new fencing, which, um, within the fencing now, dogs cannot escape. Um, they cannot climb it, and if they get through a gate, they just end up in the other yard. They can't, they can't get off of the property. Um, and, um, additionally, um, as far as the noise is concerned, um, when we're talking about the hours and things like that, um, after about 5:30 at night, the dogs don't go outside and play anymore. Um, they go out between eight and nine o'clock at night just for a final potty break. So, um, in that, that one-hour timeframe, there might be a small period of time where the dogs are outside and you hear barking. But after 5:30 at night, the dogs are not allowed to even play anymore.
Because you're the manager, uh, or the, you're related to the petitioner, give them some testimony and their sworn remarks that are different than the petitioner, so some of their 5:30 limits, et cetera. But I understand your heart, so thank you very much. And then the final speaker.
My name is Alice Edwards, A-D-I-C-E-W-A-R-D-S. I live at 841 High Ridge Drive in the city of West Chicago. I'm a customer of Kelly and Joe's, although Jay and Tracy have met me before due to COVID. We adopted our guy from DCAS shortly before, um, with the COVID lockdown started. And we're not returning him to the rescue. We'll bring him as, uh, for daycare and boarding. Uh, I just want to speak to their great service and great facilities and the peace of mind that they provide to their customers. Also, as someone who was raised in a small family business, I've found in small family businesses in our community. And Joe and Kelly's daughter is a part of the business, and, um, there's been somebody who's too young to work, probably, but he's also, um, part of, of the family where we leave our dog. When our dog first came to them, trainer who was working with Kelly, uh, or with Jillian and Joe, his name was Chris, J-R-I-S. And before our dog was ever allowed to stay at our family, Chris behavior tested, sarched. So I don't know if that continues to be their policy, but at that time, my understanding of their policy was that every dog that stayed there, either for daycare or for boarding, had to be behavior tested before they ever went to my service. Okay, so that's, and I'd like to thank the members of the board for your service. Because as a retired attorney, I know that's something you don't get thanked for enough enough.
Thank you. One of the conditions that I did not address is a time limit on conditional uses. Here's how our time limits work. Propose a certain number of years, but we also have an alternative test, so it is shorter of X number of years. Or when the facility changes hands or is managed by some other organization, et cetera. I'd like me to get some thought in the number of years. If you were, uh, building a million-dollar building, I would have to say reasonable for us to say, well, yeah, you're granted a relief, but it's for one year. But testimony has done. All of the improvements that you're making for the site are made on purpose of, uh, resolving current conditions. Second, so some time limit is reasonable in this instance. Secondly, as Paul has suggested and others, that going from 50 to 125 is a very dramatic increase. You suggested in your original presentation that, uh, that's why the number that we determined, you can't do that. Somebody comes in and says, I wanna build, um, 10 units on my, 10 residential units on this site. Auto zoning board say, well, it's not for seven. That's not believable. It's not a bargaining situation. Prove or reject what you propose. I do think that, uh, it makes a lot of sense for you to propose some number below 125, uh, for an interim period and then come back to us in a couple of years. It's not such a, I mean, it's everybody a chance to see, well, is this working at 51 dogs or 62 dogs or 75 or whatever, uh, for a certain number of years. Give that some thought or have to answer now, but prior to our, uh, prior to our recommendation session. Prior away, um, in your concluding remarks. Do you wanna address any of the remarks from the audience or make a summary statement?
Joe and Kelly, one of the things we said, we're trying to be good neighbors. Like we have already discussed and we can make this a condition, we will increase the driveway, uh, as requested. We have no problems with that. And we too will have the parking, uh, shown out there and take care of it. Now, to do the improvements that we are proposing, uh, it's gonna, there's a substantial amount that we have to expend to get all this done. And I would request, uh, at this time, that the time limit be at least five, uh, five years, and then we can come back. And we would gladly accept 100 dogs at this time.
Okay, anything else?
What, what? Uh, my clients will also add a stop sign at the end of their driveway so that there is, uh, some type of traffic control device there, which will help do this. One of the questions, with the money that we have to borrow to do these substantial renovations, anything under 100 would put the rescue or my clients in a very precarious position. So, again, this is not gonna happen overnight. Construction is gonna be at least six months to a year. And the 125, you know, until then it's done, we will still stay at the 50-dog limit. And then as the, um, facilities come online, they will then be used. So that's why we're asking if we can get 100 dogs for five years and we can come back. Uh, we will increase the size of the, uh, driveway. We'll, even if we have to, uh, whatever we can depending on the permit, take care of the parking lot for employees and for, uh, people coming in. We'll put the stop sign in. We wanna, we wanna work with the.
Make sure that all those modifications to the site that you just talked about, put them on the site plan so we know it's.
Yeah, we will have that to these, to staff with next weekend.
And then we don't have to have a hundred conditions, but you gotta put a stop sign because it's on the site plan.
No, we'll have that, like I say, to staff with next weekend.
Oh. With respect to the timing condition, testimony is they're not gonna accelerate to 100 some dogs beyond 50 until such time as the construction that's been discussed is complete. So the time limit will, um, start immediately upon, if this passes, I don't know. Let's phrase it in that respect. Okay, nothing else from the petitioner. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. I, I thank Mr. Carcall, thank you for your time. I, I do, I agree with the one lady. As an attorney, you usually don't get thanked when you do something. And, uh, usually it's, you didn't do enough. So, thank you. I've served on these boards, so I thank everybody for their time.
Great. Well, thank you. And to the audience, uh, I look in here at, you know, five pendants to six, and I, my first reaction is, how many people are in the audience? And is this gonna be a service? Significant number of people in the audience that I, but I thank you for your, for the presentation. Something better or anything to that effect or something from your other neighbors who wanted to do so. Uh, we will next consider this at our, uh, our May recommendation meeting, which is the first Thursday, excuse me, the first Thursday of May. That's an open meeting. You'll hear our deliberations and our vote. There's no public testimony at that stage. Uh, we'll vote on this case and other cases and transmit the matter to the county development committee, which meets uh, later in the month of May. They go through a similar deliberation and evaluation, and then they transmit to the full county board. So by the end of May, everything proceeds as I think it will. Uh, this matter, uh, there will be an answer one way or the other to this matter by the end of May. Do not need to attend. You can check, uh, suppose the 12th, maybe it's the fifth?
Recommendations.
Well, the recommendations may five, R-D-A, which occurs in this room at five. Okay, thanks, everybody.